We have moved with HR and that position is now advertised and we're hoping we get some good applicants. The one that I have before you that I need your counsel and direction and approval currently have and have had an opening for a building official. The pay scale is such that I'm concerned about whether or not I'll receive qualified applicants. Most people see this as potential for the start of a building career. One of the items that you run into is that an applicant for a building official at this pay grade will not have the requisite certificates. So I would like to open the position as a building inspector, working through pay increases as they receive their respective certifications, working them towards the knowledge and understanding of what it takes to become a building official. The reason being, to become a building official, you'll need your first four certificates, which will be residential inspector, residential plans examiner, commercial inspector, commercial plans examiner. Moving you to the next phase for building official would be certified Americans with Disabilities Act, plan reviewer, and then the next component is the legal aspects of being a building official. It takes a while to receive all of those particular certificates and have that respective knowledge. After my many years of developing drawings and code analysis, et cetera, I helped get our last building official really well-trained and he became more valuable and out the door he went, and I'm seeing the same pattern happen. It's a lot of responsibility to ask somebody to apply to be a building official and literally put them in the frying pan. So as acting interim building official and then working with a new inspector, working them towards, I have also in that equation, within the next two to three years, the current building inspector planning on retiring and we're going to be going through that same process again, and then have that building department components of building official, building inspector, ready to move forward within the next four to five years under new employees, so.
And under this, you've already taken that workload under your own-
Correct.
-hat.
It hasn't been overly difficult, but there have been some items that were overlooked that I've been trying to clean up and work through the building end of our department and get them straightened around, and some interpretations of code and et cetera, and a couple of policies in place. We've been working through some issues.
Well, I think any time we can hire somebody and train them and develop, I mean, I know that that's the reason that our inspector or our building official left was-
But it's not budgeted for yet, correct?
Real quickly, Jason, it is budgeted. I have a building official position that is currently funded. Our last building official left in the 1st of December last year. The position has not been filled, so we have budget to cover that-
The current.
That current-
But we can't-
So here's what's going to happen. They're going to change, instead of replacing the grade 14 official position, we're going to replace that with an inspector that's a grade 11. And then eventually, within the next 18 months or so, that position will become a grade 14 again, but there are sufficient funds because we're looking at, even with the existing budget line, it'll be less of a salary.
Okay, perfect.
It's a progression of where you want to start this individual and say, okay, we understand you don't have the knowledge and so we're going to start you here and we're going to help you develop into this position.
Perfect.
As a general, a certified building official starts at about $80,000 and goes up. And a grade paid 14 here is $60,000, $62,000, $65,000. And so finding quote-unquote "a certified building official" at our current pay scale, it makes sense to start with an inspector and train that person, moving them forward. The last one ended with-
How long does it take to get from building inspector, once you're hired, all the way to building official?
Anywhere from 18 months to potentially two years, but that said commissioner, it also depends on the background of the individual relative to the building industry and code.
Yep.
Because it's a language all unto itself. It's an interesting one to learn and understand. Anyway, I would like to receive approval from 14 to 11, take it to an inspector position, take it to HR tomorrow to get it advertised.
I have no problem.
No, it's a good plan.
Motion. Go ahead and make one.
John, you're shot out today. I like you doing it.
Mr. Chair, I agree that we approve the position change as discussed.
You have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Hal, the only thing you'll need to do is we'll have to have Aleisha set up a new position control before he can post the document. So just make sure when you email-
Okay.
-HR, include her.
Take care of it in the morning.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, you're up, Kristi.
Kristi Clausen, call controller. Do you want to start with the ARPA since that's what the group is here for?
They've waited this long, they can wait longer.
I thought they'd just want to come join us today.
Well, we can do the budget letter really quick.
They enjoyed watching us sign bills, so let's talk budget letter.
Okay. I just wanted to present to the board the ask what you would like to see in the department memo, because the court usually sends out with budget sheets. Those will be going out next week. Usually within that memo, we try to give some direction on salaries, we try to give some direction on what to do with the operating budget. They can, of course, do what they choose to do, but the direction usually helps so that they have some guidance in what they need to do. So the first item was salaries. Do we tell them just to put forth what they can? We've been working through a compensation group.
When are you going to present?
Do you want to talk about today or would you rather do it next week? What would you like to do?
We can give you overall what we think we're going to do, but we really don't have numbers or direct guidance of anything.
Alex, you want to come up? We'll talk about this real quick.
I don't want that to sound wrong.
No, no, yeah, no. And I talked to these guys and let them know that we had no numbers for today, that today was just a general discussion.
Yeah.
What we've been, and Scott, you can come up as well for this a little bit. We put together a group of five or six individuals from across the county to look at the pay scale and the pay table and things like that, and try to come up with a compensation system that would work for the county into the future. And Jason did a great job reaching out to the other counties to get comparable pay tables from Bonneville, Bingham, Madison, and Twin Falls. And so from that, we found that we have some hotspots where we need to address right away and a lot of spots where I thought we were off, we were okay. So that was very useful information. So just in a high-level discussion, the group came up with kind of a three-step plan, or three-step plan that we would like to propose implementing over a three-year period. And again, we don't have numbers to talk about, so I don't want to get into any specifics that way, but generally speaking, we would like to condense our steps from the current level of 10 down to five, making the assumption that it would take up to five years to be proficient at your job, someone that is hired. With that, condensation, whatever the proper term would be, we would set the requirement that all positions would be hired at step one, but that the department managers would have the option after a 90-day period to bump them up to a higher pay step based on criteria that they would post before. So we would know that, like Kyle or like Hal was just talking about, once you get this certification, this certification, you can move up in those five steps. So that was kind of the first phase of it. The second one was talking about putting in an annual COLA, because if everybody's at market after five years, what do we do? And so we talked about putting in a number for an annual COLA that we would try to shoot for based on funding availability. You know, it wouldn't be a guaranteed COLA, but this is what we would shoot for, see where revenue's at. And then the third part of that would be, again, based on budget availability, if we had the funds, to then provide a one-time bonus for everybody that would be divided up by department, and then that department head would then get to distribute the bonus as they saw fit within their department. So for example, if we had $500,000 that we could use for this bonus, we would split that $500,000 up based on department size, so one department might get 20% of that, another department might get 2%. And then that department manager would then have the ability to split that amount of funds up between their employees as they saw appropriate. So that's kind of the shell, the framework that the group has come up with to see if that's an okay direction to travel, and again, come back maybe next week with some better numbers on the hotspots that we felt needed to be addressed based on the information received from the other counties.
So would we start them at minimum? You said step one, but we'd start them at minimum and-
Step one would be minimum, yes, and step five would be the market rate or the max.
Kind of what we did, me and the sheriff have been working on is like that step five would be, we took an average of the four different counties that you got the information of, and then we found a kind of a level where that was the average with the other counties were paying.
I think like in our world, you know, we have like a general operator that has a level of proficiency. It takes a little while to get there, maybe getting a CDL is part of that. So if somebody came to us with those proficiencies, then we could move them up a little bit faster. But really, we take people essentially down a half step from where we're currently at. We take them down below our funding would be that step one. And then really, the position that they would be funded for, allocated for, would be at that, probably that 90-day step, because we would assume that people are going to hit that step at some point. So we'd have to fund for that.
And these are all things we'll have to work out, the verbiage on, and make sure that the full board is in support of. So that'll have to get-
And really, we can't do bonuses. So what do we call that extra money? Because we can't do bonuses.
We will come up with a appropriate term, if that's approved by the board.
And I like the shell. At least it's a movement. I mean, we've been here for, going on six years now, and we've talked about something. I mean, everybody here, we talk about something, so I'm grateful for the work that's being taken care of here, but for this letter, it needs to go out hot when?
No later than Friday.
So for that, probably-
What did we say last year in the letter?
We really didn't address salaries.
No. I think what we-
Which we could keep the same.
What we had said is that you don't need to worry about including salary increases because the commission is going to look at those through the budget process, is basically the message that has been given the last three years, really.
But then we always have departments that, I want to make sure to put in for my people because I think they need raises. You're never going to stop that.
And we're going to evaluate that when we go through the budget process anyway.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what they do.
I would just put in the letter what we've done for the last few years and move forward.
And then for operating, do we want to train full-time, unless there's some different circumstances within?
Well, and that's always a statement, too. I mean, we're not looking to increase taxes. Look at your overall budgets in the last couple of years, but also, as you look at, as they look at budgets, we want to know what their necessities are. And there's got to be a separation between necessities and wants and wishes, and that would help us a lot. But if there's something out there that we've missed and we haven't talked about, we need to know that at budget time, too.
I mean, this is going to be basically, we'll end up sending out something very similar to what we sent out the last couple of years.
We usually don't do it too much.
Yeah. If there's no specific project or thing that you want to ask of them that we put in the letter, then we'll just put generally what we have the last few years.
I'll do that. The only other thing I changed was, we added a uniform line, so that clothing allowances, we call it uniform slash clothing allowances, so that those can be tracked separate and no differently than we did a few years ago to host facilities. So that was based on interactions during the year.
Discussion, okay.
So we'll just pretty much keep it the same and then just add the dates. Okay. And we'll continue to work on the salary stuff and report back.
And I appreciate your team, like I say, a direction.
I think this is the, we've talked about it every year since you and I have been here, and I think this is the most productive steps forward that we've had.
Good.
Now to ARPA.
Thank you.
Do you have that piece of paper? About a couple of projects. I've got, on your basic ARPA project spreadsheet, we can have every time with the highlights on it, I've got revised costs as much as I can for the up-to-date information. I've got dollars spent. I did move the forensic pathology down to the bottom. We had spent the $110,000. I moved the $2,800 to a different budget, so that freed up that $2,800. We still have $4,577,844 that we need to allocate.
Four million what fee?
Four million 577,844.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Four million 577,844.
Okay, got you.
I need $225,083 of expenditure category items. That can be tourism, if we do something at the event center or fair. It could be, based on prior projects, it could be wastewater, stonewater, things like that. So I sent you the project list, and I can go through if you want to look at these projects, and then as you approve things, I'll do a subtotal so that we can hopefully reach that four million five-
We're at, the requests are 10.3, I think, right?
The requests are like the 13.
That are still out there.
Yeah, the backup.
Yeah, it's 13.
I'm wondering if there are some things we should just take off and knock that number down.
You can proceed how you would like, I'm here to facilitate.
And I'll just speak up. You guys have all heard me talk about it. We made a decision to tear down two buildings down at the fairgrounds, and I would like to take a million dollars, build a combination of office, meeting place, and exhibition hall, but we're going to tear these two buildings down on our property down there.
Is this on top of the already allocated monies?
Yes. Because the other monies are to build barns. And I was down there last night and talked with them, and a hundred-by-a-hundred barn would take care of two, basically three other barns, and so that'd take care of some of the barn problems, concerns they have. But as I've been down there and visited and looked, if we're tearing those exhibiting buildings down, we got to have a plan to replace them. We can't just tear something down and not have an idea. So as I've been down there the last two nights, that's just something I'll throw out there.
What was the consensus? What did they decide with the discrepancy about the ownership of that land?
And that, I've been down there the last two nights, and what I have talked to the board or their city council about was, we got to, we can't keep going back to the past. You can't read half them things, you know? They started in 1910. And so let's learn from the past, get our attorneys together, write up a document, and say, this is what it is now. So wipe out the past, and that's Mayor Nelson. He says, well, when do you want to get with this? And I said, well, we got to have this other discussion, and then we'll get together and come up with an agreement. So if we buy the right-of-ways in the property for a dollar, something of that nature, you know, and then it's out there and we move forward from here.
You can't live in limbo.
It's been there ever since I've been here, well, it's been there since 1910, but there's a roundabout in the middle of our property, their property. We got buildings built on their property, and they got buildings that are, you know, we cross back and forth. I really feel something needs to happen.
Yeah. That's- I'd like to invite the other elected officials up here to join in on the fun here today. Probably ought to get Dan up here, too.
Yeah.
Dan, come on up.
Everybody else might as well come up, too, if there's an empty chair. And then the other project I wouldn't mind doing is, I wouldn't mind going up there to the event center, building a school, and then tearing down Scott's house, and on the other end of it, having an office complex there. And that's, all I'm saying is that these are one-time dollars that we have. These are a couple of projects that I think brings our county up where it needs to be. As I look at those kids up there, I'd really like to provide something better for them. And so those are two projects that I think are good for our youth, are good for the county as a whole, and I mean, as Scott runs that facility up there, it's pretty tough to me, for me or, you know, for him to invite somebody to come to invest in our activities, and you take them into that old house.
Hey, do you want me to add those two projects to this list?
Well, and I'd like some discussion with these guys, I mean, let's-
We do have the deadline change of what we need to obligate, but I think for the sake of procurement, being able to move forward and us being able to get these contracted and moving forward, I-
Well, those are both pretty big items.
That we can get this list worked out.
Today? Hell yeah, we're going today.
That was the goal we had set.
You bet. Let's go for it.
I see we have remodel chambers on here. I think that can come off, right?
That can, I thought I took that off.
Oh, maybe I got a different list. I don't know, whatever list I'm looking at.
Right at the bottom, commission, $100,000.
Oh, that's right. But I did make the notes, so okay, that one's off.
All right. I would like to not put any money currently with the ARPA funds toward the thing above the school, that's above the elections office, and the reason for that is, and, you know, I was trying to get ahold of you today and we just didn't connect, but, you know, I've started talking to some people about some other ways that we can handle the school issue with respect, so I've talked to a charter school guy, I'm waiting to get ahold of the school superintendent. I think there may be some other options, and you, so I'm sorry we missed not talking today because I don't want to go down a wrong path either, but that's what I wanted to talk about. There may be other options where this is funded through, at least partly through the education, state education budget. And so I'd be reluctant to put any money towards this at this point when there may be another option that really does not entail the county taxpayers having to lose these one-time funds. So that's why I would not want to put any money toward that right now until that's fully investigated.
Something to keep in mind is if we add a building or a facility, those are going to add costs to next year's budget for utilities, maintenance, those kinds of items. So we need to keep that in mind, but that will affect next year's bottom line.
Okay. So anyway, for that reason, I would not be in favor of that particular project.
Didn't change my mind.
At least I tried.
And just because we don't do a project, we do have reserves, we do have the LITCF monies, we do have some other monies, that doesn't necessarily mean these projects will not occur in the future. We just need to decide what you want to use ARPA for.
I had a couple of questions for Dan. As I looked at the list, the courthouse annex sidewalks for 350, is that all of the sidewalks on the campus right around here?
Yeah.
And are they in that bad a shape, or can we replace sections that are heaving, or?
I mean, it's whatever you think. You know, the Sixth Street would be replaced with the project that we already approved. It's just the rest of them, they're, they need replaced, but it doesn't have to be right now. I think the Sixth Street ones are probably the worst ones.
And they're going to be replaced anyway?
I know the city has a grant to do a little bit of work along Clark and Center Street as well, so.
So that might be, might be money that we could save, potentially, if-
Yes.
So we could take that off because we likely have another funding source?
But that's on the wish list, not on the adopted list.
Right.
Yeah, we're just looking at the wish list.
Yeah, the adopted list is set. We just need to decide what from the wish list you want to reallocate the-
Sidewalk's gone.
Okay, all right. And then I'd also look at not doing the parking lot at this time, the 650K. I would pull that off.
And we just approved the funds for Room 118, so we could take that off as well.
I'm sorry?
The money from the backup list for 118.
The commission chambers.
Yeah, take that off. So that whole thing, maintenance, so that's 679, a million, a billion one, we can just pull right out.
So I added the million for the fair, so we're at $10,109.
We have 2.2 million to cut out still.
And I would take out, well, if we don't do the, what is this IDC, ISP, juvenile probation? What is that? That's $2 million.
That's what Ernie was talking about.
Okay, so I'd be in favor of pulling that out, and then we're almost there already.
I'm going to disagree with that for right now. We'll still arm wrestle some more.
Okay. I'm not arm wrestling. I want something I have a chance.
What about the landfill scale house? There's $2.5 million budgeted in landfill for that, so we would only need a million and a half to finish it, but that could be a project that maybe we use landfill money for?
We don't have any real estimates on that. That's just a swag, isn't it?
No. No, we have a, it's a 3.9 is an engineered estimate.
And that was to redo the scales and the scale house?
Building a road, so we would create a staging area for the vehicles to get them off of the main road, new scale house and new scales. And some recycling areas.
So if we dumbed that down a little bit, kept, I know, kept our scale, my number one priority with that is a bathroom for those ladies. Number one.
Which is why it's in the budget.
Yep. So-
What we were looking at doing on that one also is getting it out to where some of these things could be done by the county, so like the road that goes through there, that is a county road that goes up the hill, so we do receive some funding for that, so then road and bridge could maybe help work on building the road, which would cut a lot of that money out of there, and a few things like that, but-
About how much do you think?
Um, I don't know, I'd have to look at a guy.
It's a swag, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're ridiculous compared to what we can build it for, but there was quite a bit of, probably over a million, that was just in earthwork and asphalt, so.
We got skills on that.
So if that would take a million off, then the other $500,000 we could probably fund through the landfill, so we could-
So you could take all 1.25?
Potentially take that whole thing off.
That'd be great. And then how much are we down to now?
That leaves us at 2.2 if you take that out, if my math is correct.
I'm at 8.6. What's left on this list?
And I want to go back to this list for a second.
Okay.
Because the coroner and the cooler, since we are not doing the forensicologist, I think that's a discussion, because that was hinged on-
Yeah, but we have a trailer that can satisfy that need. Dan, what's the condition of the building out there?
I would not try to rebuild that building. It would need to, that end of that building would have to be taken down and shored up, and then build a whole new building in that spot.
So there's $100,000 that would come off this list.
So I would think, it would be like more of a $250,000, $300,000 project.
If you kill the project, basically.
Okay, I imagine that's what I'm, that's the discussion.
So we need to either add 170, well, we either need to add $200,000 or remove the project- project and take that, add 100,000 to allocate, if that makes sense.
So, issues that we had, that we identified this last year, as we hooked up the trailer, the trailer is good, but it's a Band-Aid for now. Wintertime caused issues, because wintertime, it gets too cold. The insulation in that trailer is not good enough to, I guess, for lack of a better word, it's getting too cold as we try to use it. So, it really needs to, we were hoping that if we were to do this, we'd have it done before winter again this year, and we'd have that problem solved. But, that does create issues.
Okay. But, but it is a big concern. I mean...
Well, and I think if I understood right, it's a matter of how we do it, rather than re, just doing the lean-to, right, and trying to fab up something right now as it stands, is probably not the best idea, if I understood what you were saying correctly. The best of, the best approach is to actually sever that, open that space up, and then build, put a steel building in its place.
Okay. And that, so $100,000 isn't...
No, I think we're, we were talking, what, 300?
Yeah. Well, originally, we had approved 100,000, but then on the backup list, we had to add to that, because the 100 was not going to be sufficient.
Right.
For the stuff we're talking about with the coroner, it says here, 175, 2053. Is that, can all this stuff we're talking about be done for those numbers?
No. They're gonna have to be expanded a little. That's, because the construction cost, it's gonna expand that. A lot of what we were looking at at that time, when those numbers were put together, was our, possibly our ability to do it in-house, versus having to farm it out. And the other idea was, if I'm understanding correctly, we were looking to modify what is already there, opposed to Dan's saying that he believes it would be best, long-term, to just tear something down in that spot, do a steel building.
This 175, that I understand, is additional to the 100.
Yeah, but actually, that 175 needs to change to 200.
Right. So, but for 200, we could do it all?
Well, it'd be this 200, plus the already allocated 100. So, the total cost of the project is 300,000.
But we already have 100 allocated. So, we're only talking about a difference of 25,000?
No.
An additional 25 from what's on this list.
Yeah.
Additional 200,000.
From what's on this list, from what's on this list.
Add 25 to what I have on there, the 175, and it's 200. So, for a total of 300, yes.
And I know that's a priority to you, but it isn't to me right now.
Well, and I'll explain why, because here's the issue is...
Well, I think I just told you. I know it's a priority to you, but it isn't to me.
Well, I understand that, but there's two other commissioners, and you said you wanted to have a conversation, so I thought we would at least discuss it. But I'm okay if we want to just kill it, too.
Well, that's where I'm at.
And again, just because projects go away, doesn't mean they can't be picked up at a later date. It's just for the ARPA funds is what we're talking about.
You're adding and subtracting as we go here, I assume?
That's why she brought a computer.
Are we taking...
I'm not inclined to take that money off, especially since the forensic lab was not going forward. I, you know, I mean, I want to see where we are with the rest of these numbers, but I'm not ready to pull that off the list yet.
Jeff, do you have a decision on that one yet?
Kill it.
Okay. So, we have two to one. That one's off.
Okay.
So, let me add the other 100. I know I do. I should have written yours. And that bottom number now goes to 4.6 million, so if you're tracking this, Jeff, add 100,000.
Add 100,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll struggle through. So, we now have 3.7 to reduce, right? Do you see anything else that just you don't want on here?
We have to remove how much? What's our total now on this, on all of the stuff that's lost?
8.4 million. We have, 8.4 million is what's on the wish list. We have to reduce 3,700 and change.
And where, how much do we have right now for the landfill scale house remodel?
We don't have any on the wish list.
I took that off the list.
Oh, it's on here.
Yeah. So, let's just start at the top. Leases. If you want to reduce ongoing costs, we could pay off the leases. However, if you just re-acquire more leases, that defeats the purpose of saving ongoing monies. A handful of the leases don't look like they have a ton of miles, and I'm not talking sheriff ones yet. You're different. But, some of those vehicles, we could just buy, keep, and that would reduce 50,000, $60,000 in future budgets.
Is that for all three of these at the top, where it says county-wide, or just the enterprise?
Just the first enterprise. Just enterprise. Now, when we get to the sheriff leases, if we paid those off, that would not necessarily save ongoing monies, because the sheriff's office needs to replace five, potentially six vehicles every year. Next year, we will be at the point that we are leasing five vehicles. So, that cost is gonna be what we're gonna be spending, assuming we keep on track with doing that cycle of vehicles. So, that won't save any money. The only thing it will save is, if we buy sheriff vehicles instead of lease, then those vehicles can be trickled down to the other departments, like what we've done.
And then, next year, the first of the five years, where we see where that residual lands, after next year.
We're covering to the end of that.
Correct. Which we, we're waiting for, see where that, what happens with that. I think that's why we started it.
Correct. Run the test.
Yes.
So, we could just pay off the enterprise leases?
If we pay them all off, though, it'll reduce, it will reduce ongoing costs, or not?
The enterprise ones will, yes.
So, all three, just the enterprise?
Yes. If you don't, turn around and re-acquire new leases. It defeats the purpose to pay them off and then go back to leasing.
No.
So, if the intent is to pay off the enterprise leases and then not continue with leases, that will save us going forward.
How many, in the past, when we were purchasing sheriff vehicles, how many of those did we recycle each year?
All of them.
All of them? So, we kept them. So, it saved us buying new vehicles, and we would just scatter those down, and...
But we can potentially still do the same thing.
Right, that's true. I guess at the end of the lease, we can buy it out, and then we could...
For some of them. Some of them we're buying back, some of them we're not.
Some of them were a dollar buyback.
Yeah, and some of them were a little...
Yeah.
And some residuals, if we wanted to get rid of them.
Carrying forward.
And see what the values were on that, the five vehicles.
So, do you think you would prefer to, to keep leasing your vehicles?
Well, I, if we didn't, we'd still be doing the same thing. We'd purchase and still rotate brand-new equipment in it, because that was the, the other part of this, was recycling those cars. Once that five-year came up, we'd get rid of that car, and we'd just order it with new equipment. Prior to that, we were trying to retrofit equipment in newer vehicles, which was just, it was economically, it was, and labor-intensive, because our guys were doing it.
And if you ever changed models of vehicles?
Correct.
You couldn't, because you can't put Ford stuff in Chevy.
But we can still do that, if we purchase it outright now.
So, doesn't all of your...
Two of his vehicles.
So, the cycle program helps departments?
Yeah.
But like, when you lease, they have all the equipment on them, and maintain that, and...
But we can still do that, even if we purchase it outright. We can still do the same setup, dealing with the two vendors.
Regardless, it's gonna be the same thing. It's just if we make lease payments or buy...
It's whether we pay it all upfront, or we just stretch it out on lease.
So, do we have a, I was trying to hit an easy one.
Well, maybe, maybe an easy one real quick, and we can come back to that, is the windows of juvenile detention. Is that 250 anticipated our expense, or is that 250 to be divided by five counties?
That's total cost, but I'm not sure 100% what those windows are, but anything on the detention side needs to be shared with the participating counties.
That 250 isn't really 250. It might be 50.
And that might be something that would be easy for us to do, using LITCF monies or PILT monies.
I think that's an easy one to take off, because that becomes a shared expense with different, different counties.
And it doesn't kill the project, it just...
Great, take it off.
Saves 250,000 for projects. Why didn't you do that beforehand?
Going back to this discussion, and then I saw that way.
Going back to this lease thing, is the recommendation to go ahead and pay off the enterprise, but leave the sheriff, the two sheriff ones as it is? Is that what you guys were thinking? Not, not put ARPA money into that?
I'm just saying that it will not save ongoing monies.
It doesn't change anything.
And you're okay with that, if we just pull those two off?
Well, it's a matter of, if we stay with the leases, we would, and if the decision is to purchase it outright, then we would just go forward to the next budget and plan on purchasing.
So, it sounds like we could take these two off, and it's fine?
I personally like the leases for your vehicles, because I just think it's easier for you. But, if I'm wrong, let me know about this.
I think, the way it's set up now, I think we can do it the same way, even if we purchase it.
Okay.
Because we still have good contacts now with the two vendors that deal with the equipment and the vehicles. And it's just a matter of saying, hey, this is the vehicle we want.
Take that off.
Help a gun.
So, take off sheriff vehicles?
Yes.
Both of those?
Where we at now?
The right-of-use leases?
Yeah. The right-of-use. One is a, one that we would flip, and the other is the purchase.
Okay.
So, that was the difference in those. Oh, we are...
Tony, tell me about the boiler room for the search-and-rescue building. What's...
So, temporary boiler room?
That's, that's behind the jail?
That's behind, that we had to use for, well, temporary boiler room.
Right, right.
So, it's a room that's just vacant now. But it has power, it has heat, and it's a matter of turning that into a useful building for, whether it's a SWAT team, or put all their stuff, because there is a room within our building that we could utilize for office space, if we were to move that somewhere.
So, where'd you come up with the 400,000?
Well, that was with the search-and-rescue building, doing some upgrades on that as well, on the back end of it. The back end, there's heat, there's power, there's just no water or anything like that. And those were numbers that Levi came up with, if we were to do that. It's not essential. I mean, it's, it's one of those that it would provide us more useful space, and we can move some things out of the building. And, when I say the SWAT team, because there're Bearcats back there, everything's back there, and we would push all their equipment back into that building, and they could actually store, we have lockers in that one room that's in our main building. We'd move all those lockers to one of those buildings, and then we'd utilize that new, bigger locker room as a, it's that main room. As you come in that back, there's our armory, and then there's a big locker room that's just lockers for SWAT teams.
Just a big metal building that was in back.
That's, so that would affect, this 400,000 would be improvements on that big metal building back, and that temporary boiler room.
If you had to pick between that, the new emergency generator, which was a good...
I'd, I'd, I have the generators. That can go, if I had to do it.
Done.
And the body scanner can go, because I think we can find a grant for that. And then, the showers, see, I'm all, taking the sword, guys.
No, no, stop right, stop right, stop right there. Don't keep going.
Well, and this is straight from Levi, because we want to see if there's another route we want to go with those.
So, you want, so you think you'd be inclined to wait on the showers?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's a matter of, we want to see where we're at with these current showers that we've done, to see if that's the long-term.
But everything else on there...
Yeah, for longevity, to see if this is the answer. Because, why put more into it if it's not the answer that...
Right.
So, we just took off the showers, the body scanner, and the generator?
Correct. And that paved parking lot is one that, I actually got a more current estimate just today.
What's the number for that?
75.
Not 100, but 75?
Yes. It's 73.4, but I'm saying 75.
Scott?
I, I think that we're gonna come in on our Grand Stance project. I know we're gonna come in under budget, somewhere in the $10,000 below budget, and I think we can actually roll our flags. I think the flag, flags will be about 15,000, so I could take 10,000 from that Grand Stance project, and then probably just find some rest, some in the rest of our budget, so we could probably kill that 5,000, or 2,000.
So...
Take off that.
We'll take that off. We'll still get the flags.
Take the flags off, is what you're saying.
We'll still, we'll still get the flags, but we can take that off.
Oh, we can take it off of here?
Yeah.
Take it off here, we'll find it somewhere else. So, we're down to, we need 2.1 million taken off. We have on here the coroner truck table and cooler. If we're not doing the actual, the renovation space, do we need that? And we did talk on the fleet, so that takes off another 73. We did talk, Kyle and I talked on the fleet, that if we paid off some of the leases, there might be opportunity to reallocate some vehicles that might serve replacing the Expedition that the coroner's have, and get a more reliable vehicle to...
Yeah, that's off, that's on the list.
Yeah.
We're looking, yeah, with the fleet, we, we're over 40 vehicles that are over 20 years old, and this is just, these costs throughout the years, that kind of are kicking us down the, can down the road, and it's not getting any better. But, we got, like we've said before, we've got two or three vehicles that are in the 80s, and it's something that we really need to look at.
So, again, we, we've talked about this, and just to make sure I'm tracking what you're saying, you feel we can cut 40 vehicles from our fleet of 160 and not really die?
No. No, I'm saying there was like 40 that are over 20-something years, but that's not saying that we're not using them.
Right. So, we talked the other day, and you said we have 165 vehicles in our fleet, right?
Yes. So, we, we do have, so the list that you got, and where we come up with that dollar amount, is there is vehicles that can be getting, getting rid of or underutilized, but every one of them are so old, we still need to purchase these vehicles just to maintain our fleet, because these ones are all utilized ones that are on here. But that's, I kind of got a sheet that's showing of what they are, but there's nothing we can move around necessarily. Like, say, if there's a department with some underutilized, and say, we need to get rid of them, but then there's some that are utilized that are still 20 years old.
Right. But, like we talked about, if we could condense that 40 down to maybe 15 fleet vehicles, so we have new fleet vehicles, get rid of all the 20-year-plus vehicles, that would be a potential direction to go instead of...
There could be that. That would be the next part of our discussion. If we go with the policy, then we go out to the departments, because I can't right now say what their utilization is, without going out and visiting with each one and seeing what works best for them. We might even be able to move some vehicles a little bit and stuff like that, but it still doesn't really change the price of new ones that we're looking at for this year. But, but it will save with other areas.
What if we take off the fleet replacement, and just plan a budget for that out of the general fund reserves next year? I know we've got reserves of that amount that we could utilize, if you're comfortable with my opinion on that.
I'm comfortable. I mean, we got a plan. We're going in a direction with our vehicles. And that is a big one right there.
That gets us a lot closer, if you're comfortable with using reserves. They're capital purchases. It's one-time vehicles. It's extreme, it's...
That's a PILT, or...
It's appropriate to use reserves for that.
Yeah.
I'd say take it off.
Yeah.
And I only need 803,000.
So, Dan, I have a question. And my opinion has always been do as much deferred maintenance, and, so that we don't have that ongoing. But, if we're still going to, if we're still talking about potentially a building up there at the wellness complex, what about the Road and Bridge roof in this lot of money? And I have a question about the bathroom remodel at Historic.
Yeah, so just a wish list. The historical museum needs bathrooms.
And that, those didn't get touched at all in the, in the insurance and remodeling and all that?
What it has going on is it had a heave in the floor and so it's kind of a hump in the bathroom. It's broke the tile. So it's created a hazard. So just as a wish list, I put it on there. Maybe not.
Which bathroom is the one that you think is a hazard?
The women's bathroom.
Yeah, okay. Cause I, you know, I've been there all the time. I don't see a problem.
Well, it's got broken tile. It's heaved up a few inches. It actually goes clear through the place. I don't know how it happened. And then the Roden Bridge roof needs its past due. I think that's a pretty close number of what it would take to replace it. It's a black membrane roof that has probably upwards of 100 patches on it. It's due. And then the planning zoning one, I mean, it's not critical. It's more of a cosmetic thing that isn't critical, but something that we've always just kept pushing off, but still it looks pretty bad out there.
The planning G I S, I would just take that off personally. I don't know what you think. It's 325.
Yeah. Isaac is going to ask you which roof was more important. Do you feel like that?
Planning zoning is more of a cosmetic thing and his is more of a, that thing's.
And we're down to half a million now.
The skylight?
Skylights could be absorbed in maintenance. It's just a wish list. Two of them leaked this year that I can just rot now. We could, we did two a year and.
I think thankfully we've been best to put it in there right now.
That's right.
And, well, it goes other directions.
They're not leaking here, so it's just more of a proactive thing that killed.
And then the brick work at the veterans?
I'll tell you why I think that's good. We've been putting, since before I came here, there's been 150 grand I know going to this building for a few years now. If we do this, that building's done. And all that money gets dropped down ongoing to what are we going to do for maintenance? And we need a maintenance plan. But I think that's going to save us a hundred grand a year going forward, at least. So that's why I think that.
Is that, is that, is the brick work out there at the veterans building, that 183,000, does that do the whole building or is that just like south side that's got the most weather exposure?
I don't have anything to do with that building, but I know the mortar on that thing is gone. So it better get something or else it's going to start falling off.
No, I'm just saying that we've already put 150, 20 and 25. I mean, we've already put better than $200,000 into the building. And then here's another, so we're putting $500,000 basically into this building.
I think them are done. Them are done.
Want to take off the brick work or?
Well, that's the discussion we was having.
Some of these items, we can also look and see what reserves look like and throw them in next year's budget. We have Pilt money and we have L A T C F money. So what are the projects that we want to get done this year right now with ARPA? It's not going to necessarily kill these projects from budgeting for next year.
With what we, did you, I don't know if she heard everything you just took, we just took off here.
Sorry.
We took off the skylight is off the, the roof, G I S.
Yep.
Planning G I S.
The G I S thing is?
That's off?
And the historical restroom's off?
I think that was still discussed.
We took off G I S.
It's.
The bathrooms are.
Which one's more important?
What is, Scott had an idea of what if we just did 75,000 and did one of the bathrooms, not both?
To address the safety issue, but maybe if the other one works and it's fine, it might save half.
What if it's 75?
Yeah.
Well, what do you get? I mean, I'm not inclined to do, I, I don't see it and I'm, but I'm no expert and you are, so.
Well, and these are, that's kind of what I'm weighing is, okay, do we do the brick work at the veteran center or do we do bathrooms? I mean, I'm, I'm tip for tat, kind of.
I'd do the brick, I'd put the brick work ahead of it personally.
I, I have seen a couple of spots where that brick work, we are going to start losing bricks just falling out. There, there are some spots that you can stick your finger right, right into it.
And that goes back to the conversation we've had with them, that they have some obligations also in coming up with funds and taking care of that facility.
I can take $500,000 off for Roden Bridge's roof and we can use that, we can budget that next year out of Roden Bridge reserves.
And then does that take us to where we need to be with everything?
Gives you $42,000 you need to spend.
I'm sorry?
Thanks, Scott.
It gives you $42,000 you need to spend.
I just lost everything.
No, we're budgeting for it next year. You just have to be patient.
Thanks, Kristi.
Patience, next year.
Excuse me, that means everything else on this list.
Hey, one second, we got, too many conversations. One sec.
Did you leave the money then for the juvenile detention?
Yes, I did change that. So do we need to change the value on the juvenile probation kids from 2 million? Do we need to reduce that down at all?
I think it needs to be reduced down. I think it could be done. We have a shell of a building that we can use for $460,000. So you put another 400,000 on the inside, you get it for, for under a million dollars.
Well.
Can I make a comment on that though real quick? I, I think it's important to remember that there's the school up there, the youth development center. But that, where we're at right now is our entire intensive services unit. So there's four other full-time probation officers up there. The supervised caseload of anywhere between 20 or 15 to 30 kids at any given time. So we have another roughly 100 families at any given time accessing that building to go meet with probation officers. Plus, we have had a counselor that comes and provides services once a month for kids who have been required to participate in sex offender counseling specifically. So there's, there's the school and that's a critical part to it, but there's also other offices and services and probation officers that are up there as well.
So that's where it came back to Dan. You've draw, we have a drawing. And what do you figure the cost on that drawing is?
Well, with the location that we're talking about, I, I had a cost in for a road to get back there, utilities to get all the way back there. I think the shell price was missing a few things. So it, I don't think, I think 2 million is like adding some, you know, contingency on there, but I would be cautious to go lower than 1.5.
I can't remember Jeff, because I, I agree that, that contractor that had that bid for the shell was really impressive guy. I can't remember what the total square footage was.
70,000.
And what's your square footage that you have right now?
Well, I put about the old gels about eight or nine, but the drawing we have currently is five.
And then you could put Scott on the other end.
In 10 square feet.
If, if we go and if we do the buildings down at the fair, so we'd have two buildings down there and one here, and we put them out on the same bid, what would we get with three buildings in a package?
So what if we allocate 1.5 million to the juvenile probation? That puts us where we need to be. And then Kyle gets to keep his room.
I don't like that idea.
But here's the other thing we can do is as these projects, if we allocate these projects the way we have them here, I'm going to go put that 1.5 in here, then that gives us $41,000 additional to spend somewhere. But as the bids come in and Shanda works through the procurement process, if we get final numbers and that property and building need to come in higher than that, we allocate Pilt or something like that. As long as it's done by June, we have other funds that we can add to this if we're a little bit short. And if any of these other projects we find are going to be less, then we can allocate them that way too. So there is a give and take going both ways. And I can even put 1,541,019 and then every dollar is allocated.
And that's fine.
That square footage?
The other question I have is, so these got to go out to bid and we're going to put a lot of weight and pressure on Shanda. What's your thoughts in all these projects we're talking about too? So, I mean, we got, we got deadlines to meet and so.
Let me rattle off because I'm not sure how well you're able to keep track.
All right.
So anything that's going to have to go through procurement is going to be the juvenile facility, the Roden Bridge roof, polishing the cement for the sheriff, paving the parking lot, the landscaping, air handlers, search and rescue, temp building. The rescuing restroom remodel for historical, I'm, I'm not sure how that falls in. It's us doing, well, it's our building, so that'll have to go through procurement. The veterans building brick work is a weird one because it's their facility, but.
They do their procurement, so that one won't be on me.
But I will need procurement done because it's ARPA. And then the fairgrounds stuff, which you've kind of already, you may not know about. So it's more than it looked like, but it's everything.
Good things that we have in the works already. That architectural services is going to be one of them, because there's quite a few of them on here. The roof remodels that are going to be, need to go. So that is going to put a lot of pressure. I think Dan has a meeting next week with Booth Architecture to start those projects rolling. And then we'll get a much better idea of when they'll have architectural drawings ready for us to go. So it's good that we already have that one going. The other pieces, depending on how many shells you guys approve, we do have 85% of one already done and ready. We remodel what we need to do with the one that we've got and we're able to put it back out. The timing is going to be the thing. Any ones that are going to be over, for public works, anything that's over that 200,000, we've got to publish twice and right, there's just timing on there that is going to run us anywhere between four to six weeks. By the time we get one live and we get it back uploaded, there's five of those. So there is some time.
On the, the meeting, or the, the building down at Downey, it might, it might be beneficial if we just like threw that under my stuff rather than, that we could just throw that, so I could be, work with Shanda on that stuff, rather than trying to take that to the fair board meetings and back and forth. It might just be easier if we, I'll still keep those guys in the loop. We'll still meet with them and talk about that stuff. But I'm just saying, if it's going to go towards that office, we could just put the office under, kind of under my purview. So then I'm working with Shanda as far as approving the RFP stuff, getting this stuff back and forth, rather than necessarily waiting for the fair board to meet and approve any changes. It would just make it faster.
And we kind of stressed that last night too.
I don't see why that would be a problem.
All that would go underneath the commission. It's a building, it's up to the commission.
We, we did leave the elections ADA doors on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I just sent you one of those. If you want to check it with what you've got.
Did you, did you send it to all of them?
I would send it to everybody.
In that square footage, were you including the rec yard in that square footage?
We ordered one already.
Okay.
Up there.
That gives Matt $500.
Right.
So are we good?
So the 5,000 square feet is okay.
We are. We've got the number we need.
Because you'll, you'll use the whole complex and you.
Do you want me to review it just really quick?
Okay, everybody listen and Kristi will go through. You can make your tip.
What I have on the list right now is we're going to pay off the enterprise leases, which is roughly 279,000. So if we can get that fine tuned, that might leave a little bit more money. The ISP ish, uh, kids, 1,544,519, elections ADA doors for 25,000, Roden Bridge roof, 500,000.
I still can't believe we did that.
For the sheriff in jail.
Must have been a mistake.
For the sheriff in jail, we're going to polish cement, 200,000, landscaping, 97,000, 325. Paved the parking lot, 75,000, additional emergency power panels, 18,000, air handlers, 140,000.
Excuse me, on the emergency power panels, is that 1,800?
18,000.
1,000.
Okay.
Uh, air handlers, 140,000, walk-in freezer upgrade, 16,000, search and rescue building and temporary boiler room, 400,000. The historical restroom remodel, 150,000, ag extension, new carpet paint inside and out, 50,000. Veterans building brick work, 183,000, fairgrounds, office, et cetera, a million. If that sounds good, I will send it to everybody, even though everybody's writing it down.
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
We're good.
Do we need a motion on this or?
I can bring this.
I'd, I'd like her to have the clean packet so we.
And I made it really rough, so I'll pretty this written a little bit.
I know, I can do.
I can present this. I would also like to present to the board that, and I need to look and see which one of these will fit within that expenditure categories that we need to spend.
Fair enough.
And then, and, right, but I want to show it. So what I can do is move all of this to the ARPA spreadsheet that's color coded. And then you guys will have that. We can do a formal approval. And then the only thing that will change is as estimates come in through procurement and those kinds of things, then we can see by the end of July how we can possibly reallocate any unspent dollars. Or if something else comes in under, then we can, or over, we can figure out how to deal with that. And then through the budget process, we'll figure out if there's any overages, we'll throw in some contingency monies. That work?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Next week, are we having a meeting on Thursday?
I think so.
Okay. Then next week I'll, um.
I don't know.
Next week I'll put that and then also I'm going to throw a disclaimer before the board saying that you've approved these expenditure allocation areas and I've reported as such.
And then you've met all your ARPA deadlines and all that stuff?
Yes, I think we have.
To the penny.
Okay. I will get this sent out tomorrow and then if you guys see anything that is incorrect, please let me know. And then I'll throw on the agenda and pack it for Thursday.